All right, everybody, it is six o'clock. We are going to call this Village of Freedonia Board and N O S D Board of Education Joint Meeting to Order. The first item on the agenda is going to be the Pledge of Allegiance.
I am certified of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Man, did that sound good. Thank you, everybody. That does, yeah. Right, for sure. Uh, the next item on the agenda is for public comments. Um, anything that's not on the agenda, we're going to limit it, limit it to five minutes per person. And then if anybody does have any public comments, especially any of our guests that are online watching via Zoom, we will be monitoring, I guess, raise your hand, let us know. Um, and we will write your name down and then we can proceed with public comments. So is there anybody online or not that would like? Public comment? Nobody, nobody? Okay. Hearing and seeing none, we'll move on for items in discussion and or action. The first, the first item, I guess, let's just go over the broad view. I just want to thank everybody for coming tonight. I know it's been quite a while since we've done this. Um, for those of you that are brand new on either board, I think it's been at least two or three years since we've gotten together and basically talked about what's going on at the district level, what's going on with village operations, and really just give each other an update as to where we are. Uh, things that we can collaborate on moving forward, any information that we should know, and then, um, obviously any updates that we have. So the way we have this written out tonight is we just have three bullet points, and the first one that I have is, uh, report on N O S D district on school district operations. So I don't know if one of you wants to take, take, oh, perfect.
Uh, many board members have got to add in to jump in, uh, to open up to questions and move through our agenda here. So, um, first part, I just want to give an update before we start the start of our school year. A great start, uh, in the district. Uh, we had a number of events leading up to the start of the school year. Uh, last couple of years now, we brought our teaching staff back early, uh, so they were back on Monday, August nineteenth. It's really allowed our staff to feel well-prepared as we welcome students, um, and give that a little extra time as they get classroom and those kind of things. So it was great to have everyone back in the building. Uh, we had our annual kickoff for the school year, uh, on August twenty seventh, uh, Tuesday. I know many of you were there and enjoyed a burger or or corn, watermelon, uh, just awesome to see the turnout for that, for that event. Uh, it's been a great tradition that been started. Um, and and we love seeing the community support and community turnout for that. So, uh, that was great. And then our first day of school was this past Tuesday, uh, September, September third. Uh, and we welcomed back, uh, a large group of students, uh, to our district. Uh, it really ties into where our enrollment is at. Um, we're, we're excited to be able to share this now from the second year of enrollment. We're seeing an increase in student enrollment. Um, those of you who have been, uh, around on the border of the community for a while, although that hasn't been the case. Uh, many districts right now are in a significant declining enrollment situation. Um, and we're excited to report that the last two years we've seen an increase in students. This summer, we think we're going to add that about twenty additional students to the district. Um, without a lot of house building going on and things, I think it's really a testament to just the reputation of the district and really thanks to our families, the community, and then teaching staff and support staff who make it happen. So, uh, that's exciting, exciting news for, for our district. Uh, with increased enrollment comes the challenge of how large some of our classes have have become. Uh, we have, we have several, several grade levels where the student control is not what we'd like it to be. Uh, and and, uh, that's the good problem they have, but then that also requires the necessary funding to be able to add teachers and add sections, but ultimately that's, uh, ties in well to something we want to talk about with the operational referendum as well. Um, second part of my report is just the, some of the recent donations and community support we've, we've received, able to do projects in the district. Uh, as students came back this year, there were several things that were new that really are a result and I think a testament to some of our alumni, some of our community members who just step up and have always been very supportive of our district. So example number one, our autos program. So we received eleven thousand dollars donations from, uh, the very first graduating class that was occupied, class of nineteen sixty seven. Uh, it's a pretty awesome story. They called us up and said, hey, uh, we have a passion for the autos program, ran the paper, and you guys started up this automotive program. It's taken off with their extreme interest. We love the focus on technical education and direction the district is going. Is there a need for another auto lift in the district? So, yeah, as a matter of fact, there is. And, you know, not many weeks later, I got a phone call back saying, we got the money you guys wanted. Uh, when can we make this happen? Uh, so just really leave the, the pride of that group. Uh, Peter Gloss was a part of that. Who helped, helped lead that, Audrey Bars. Um, they wouldn't want their names set, but too bad we're saying it anyways, uh, but, but they give credit to the really that, that group from the first graduating class in nineteen sixty seven. Uh, so as a result, we're going to add that auto lift and, uh, put a hole in the wall and a second, uh, sliding door there. So it's, it's really neat to, to see where that, that autos program is going and appreciate that donation. Uh, our second project just this summer was the locker room project. So a couple of years back, we finished one of the locker rooms off our high school gym. Um, much of that was also provided through donations. This one, uh, we received, uh, ten thousand dollars from the Ozaki Easter Club and another seventeen thousand five hundred from the Boys Basketball Club. And they were able to take a pretty rough looking locker room and add some original lockers in. Uh, some, some people here might have stories from that locker room. Um, and, and made some really nice home faces to make that a good useful space. Uh, and on, on top of those donations, Rick Hughes, uh, H uh, H C R Services donated all of the labor to paint, uh, both the locker room and the adjoining rooms around it. So again, it's a testament where people in our community genuinely good people were able to help out the school and to make that happen. So we're proud of that and worth that to the place this summer. Uh, our maintenance team, uh, Kent Schiller, Bob Oldman, Jason Caswell, have been a big part of some of these projects too, taking out and saying, you know what? We'll take care of them all of that. Um, we'll do what we need to do to, to get it set up so that, um, it's something we can really be proud of. So I just appreciate all the work those guys did. Uh, in that space as well to save taxpayer dollars and be able to save, save money, uh, and doing it and doing it the right way. So we're proud of it. And then third, uh, Warrior Flex Room Project. Some of you might know, uh, if you're familiar with the district. Um, as you go from the elementary to the middle school, uh, there's two rooms on the left-hand side, east side of the building, um, that are separated by a Bible wall. Uh, through the Bruce Beer Grant of ninety thousand dollars, uh, this summer, we were able to work towards updating that space. So all new furniture, uh, tables, chairs, technology in that space. Um, we have forty-eight chairs. We can, you can have larger groups in there. Uh, have, have board type meetings, community meetings in that space. So just top notch. Uh, Bruce Beer Foundation has still been getting out the last few years, over a million dollars for this year. And for a district our size, a community our size, that's on the way forward. It really is. So we're just grateful, uh, for the Bruce Beer Foundation and what it's allowed, allowed us to do. Um, then the third part of the report, just wanted to, um, talk briefly about the operational referendum that'll be on the ballot on November fifth. Um, and I know we could, we're going to do three presentations tonight, so instead we're just, we're going to pass out a quick handoff. So if everyone should just, uh, take one of those and, and pass it around. Uh, just to kind of look at a high level, um, about our operational referendum. So, uh, some of you who were at our back to school commitment, you, you saw this board or signed up to be a part of our team, um, as we talk through, uh, this and, and really try to share information. Um, to be a member of everyone in a transparent way with our community. Um, and, and also uh, make sure to get across the, the real team that we have, uh, for, for these slots. So, um, we try to just, again, very high level, and I know we don't have a lot of time, so we'll try to talk through this in, in five minutes or less. Uh, but we just want to highlight, first of all, uh, what has changed with this referendum. So first piece is we've reduced the total amount, the total mass of the referendum. Um, we take serious feedback from voters, right? The last, uh, two opportunities to bring this forward, it didn't pass, kind of in one of the pieces has been, um, potentially, you know, some of the things we outlined. Uh, we brought back a variety of, uh, feedback opportunities that are not ready maybe to sport a track or make a shed. Um, as a group, we still feel it's a need, uh, it clearly is, and we've taken a lot back there, but we also believe it's really important that first and foremost, day-to-day operations, this, this needs to be addressed. Uh, these ones are needed to be able to keep high quality staff. Um, and we've highlighted some of the ways and money's going to be spent. So I mentioned earlier about some of our class sizes. Um, we were making commitments to say we need an additional staff and to address what is a really good problem. If increase enrollment, increase class sizes. Uh, we don't want the classes to be as large, so committed to three additional teachers to address some of those class sizes. A couple of large classes at uh, O E S, um, as well as one very large class at Ole Miss, uh, that we've seen. Uh, second is to fill the budget deficit, needed to run day-to-day operations with school. Um, we've got some really good conversation with people, um, that will no one ever wants to talk about COVID, me included, uh, but during that time, right, um, on both sides of the aisle said there will not be additional funding for schools. Um, when they pass the Bible budget. They said the funds that you're able to use are really the funds from COVID dollars. And so that's what we had in use for those years to fund that budget, but then those dollars go away. Uh, and plus those are used, they're required to be used, um, by now. And so now as a result, we need, we need to make sure we have the funds to run day-to-day operations of our school. And then thirds, we maintain preventative salaries, like in so many industries right now, right? There is a need for high-quality people, uh, who are willing to work hard. Um, the teaching profession is no exception where, uh, there are, um, it's, it's very competitive. We want to try to keep just a high-quality group of staff that, that we have within our mission. Uh, so that's, uh, different ways that the money's going to be spent. Let's see the ballot question outline. Um, and then, um, the board is really taking the approach of, of nakedness commitments, be able to say that we want to keep school portion of the tax bills the same, uh, as a part of this referendum. Um, and, and the way that can be done is, uh, currently the board is aggressively, uh, paid down debt, existing debt, that's out of the books. Um, and by not paying that down aggressively, instead using those funds for operations, wires and approved referendum. Um, we can take and keep that will rate right where it is right now, um, at eight thirty-five. And so, uh, that, that part of, of the message and the, and the focus hasn't changed. I appreciate the fact that the board is very aware of that and wants to use every taxpayer dollar that we have, uh, well, and, and be fiscally responsible, uh, in the process. So that's, that's a high-level piece, uh, upcoming for us. The district, we're going to have both in-person and, uh, remote opportunities to join in a variety of the presentation. Um, presentations that will take place regarding the operational referendum. One of the other pieces we talked about, just based on some feedback we received, is opportunity to develop to other venues such as, here, Village of Freedonia Town of Freedonia, and share share the need that we have from a referendum standpoint. So, uh, with that, I will open it up to the board. Um, Josh, if anyone has anything to add or highlight from the district's viewpoint.
I'd just like to say, thanks to the Village of Freedonia, it's in our last referendum question, the majority of residents supported that, I think, it's other municipalities. So thank you.
What else? Someone speak to anything or say hi or? Anything else? Hello, hello, okay. Excellent. Well, again, I, I appreciate you guys being here and I appreciate that update. I mean, it's always, whenever you can collaborate with another organization, industry, whatever, it's always, uh, good to hear what's going on, especially within our boundaries, right? And knowing that you guys are such a big part of our of our community here. Um, the update's always great and the communication, Dave, you know, I've talked multiple times. We're always on the same page. It's easy to call and talk to each other and I encourage, you know, the board to, our board and your board to do the same, right? I mean, we're only a phone call away and um, none of us are scary individuals, I don't think. So, except for maybe Dan, but I don't know. No, no. Yeah, exactly. So, all right. Um, well, I mean, we'll obviously open it up to more discussion between us, but, uh, if you don't mind, I'll move on then to the report by the Village of Freedonia on municipal operations. Um, similar to what Dave did, I'm going to have Chris, our administrator, kind of update us on everything that's going on in the village. And then, uh, we'll move on from there and discuss other opportunities that we have to collaborate in the near future.
Perfect. Yeah, it feels weird sitting on the school board side, but I don't mind. It's been a pleasure to be with you guys today. Um, as Dave echoed, you know, we've had a great working relationship since my, I never been there about two years with the village. Uh, in a already collaborative role, I would share the talent of Freedonia as well. And so I, my whole career has been about collaboration, working together. So it's exciting to see that it's, uh, being so clear as well. But I've been giving, uh, just some high-level updates, uh, about our village, our board, uh, don't forget this information, it would be nice if you could screen these. And I'm going to follow, um, our strategic priorities. For those of you who haven't got seated, uh, last year we went through a strategic planning process. We highlighted key priorities that we were really wanting to use to reorganize our operation, which everything that we're doing was rising up to one of those key priorities. Um, if you're those who are curious, et cetera, et cetera, I posted there what I write. Um, so first off, we're going to talk about developments. So the industrial parcel, which is huge in, in the last year or two here, it's hard to miss, it drops like that highways and all that very, very happening. Uh, so that is what we're the process of doing right now. So grading has happened throughout that entire site. Uh, roads, utility build outs, it's all going on there. And the reason why we're, we're being so effective developing the parcel is because eighteen businesses that purchase properly, uh, within the industrial parcel. That's something that we're really proud of. I, I champion that with our, with our board all the time. Um, again, my, my part of the new slow experience tells me that to get any business in two years, I, I mean, that, that doesn't happen, right? And so whether it's the proximity of the highway, the Austin community that's here, there's something, there's some magic here, right? That's drawing the businesses in, and that's really exciting to make it a part. Uh, so the plan is, uh, that grading, when we tell them to elect itself, we get finished up this year. And those businesses who have already started to check, and that's when their second plans will get going, starting to build, uh, next, next year. Uh, so that's again, eighteen businesses, and we estimate about fourteen or fifteen new jobs, maybe the community, the families and kids at school. Um, on the physical side, we developed a, a pretty good rolling C I P, so there's a, no, kind of a good product list, right? If you're a big ticket item station, spending more, budgeting more, going with cash flow, you can cut expenses that the building buyer was, was kind of loosening, paying more for maybe just going year to year. Um, so we have a, a far, a far outlook, but it's always, every week we're adding different items to that list. And we continue to plan appropriately on, uh, borrowing or cash and emergency planning. Um, in addition to that, we re-revamped, updated our retirement investment policy. The average person maybe isn't very excited for us, and it is not quite a hit and miss work. Uh, it is, right? It helps us align, uh, more closely to where our priorities are. Uh, so speaking of anything's done, roads, there's been huge progress inside came on here. We did a very depth-borne study, uh, last year that she did in Victoria of our, our system. Utilities underneath it, and then quite a lot of buyers, those top ticket items that you need to look at. But from that, we established an ongoing annual road maintenance, uh, line that we just we earmark those dollars every year, uh, to tackle some of the smaller needs. And then you'll see big needs like Highlands. Uh, Highland, uh, ways what came out of that site that between the road and the underlying utility, high traffic, that's there because of the school, because of the burn difference saving. So that will be the number one priority to get done, that's what I think we're giving up right now. And, and it will be done probably every so I've shared with Dave in our schedule, we got curb gutter work happening in the next couple of weeks, seventh period, then I'll come in for paving, and then hopefully finish up by then. Um, what's to watch out for next year is we've been putting our brains together on, I thought, a paid rental. So for those who don't know, that's that problem, both the leads to playing across park. Um, several years of more long-term events and different, um, recreational activities out there. Uh, so it's seen a lot to pave with that area. Uh, so that is planned for next year, and we have verified with our C I P group plan. On the public safety side, for those who haven't met, we have Mark Hill, Eric Leach, in transition into the role after Mike Dable retired for the second time. And, uh, Eric Leach is, is very much a public-facing individual. So for those who don't know him, he's a towering guy, he's hard on to this. Uh, but he's definitely a front-end teddy bear, and he's, we submit that wants to be part of the community, wants to have that presence. And the glory to help him again, contribute that here in a big role. Uh, so whichever the pirate side, uh, pirate operations remain the same, but EMS and paramedics have been a big talking point throughout the county. Uh, Northern, uh, sort of, County had given us grant money to establish some sort of program to hire the paramedics. So it came out of that after a two- or three-year process with a joint paramedic program that expanded its cooperation with the Village of Freedonia. And so the building of Freedonia manages that program, we house thirty individuals and that equipment, and then we outsource, uh, those calls as we have a lengthy basis. So what's nice about doing that is that no one uses penalties, it has a whole burden of cost for a permanent, which has a dramatic cost thing. We're able to share that cost with most communities' penalties, and now, just like so many other communities do, we are also providing a referendum in November here, uh, to ask for dollars, uh, to fund that. For a portion, uh, after a lot of the conversation with our board, ended up settling on two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, which in grand speaking, things might not forget a lot, uh, for a village our size, but, but so many say it's going to be tough again. And so we're working on, uh, that marketing, which should get up this week, you know, our websites, mail alerts, public meetings, the training you guys will be doing too, help share that information with the community. I think you have sharing information. Our department is communication and collaboration. Well, the I think we're doing right now is better collaborations, so thank you all for being here for that. Uh, but you probably noticed an increase in a lot of communication that could appear, so with our social media, website, custom releases, we have this some month program. Really trying to get all that information out there. That way, you, you want to know, you can find out. And then our final priority is the strong sense of community, and that's one of the things I share with all the time, that I'm so proud of the, uh, the strong community and I think David, uh, too, the donations, people giving back and helping. Uh, I, I could only see that from a village standpoint as well. So some of the ways we've been able to take advantage of that to get through the new best. So we've seen our, uh, annual Freedonia Month run. It's a positive event that we've been posting for the last three years now, continues to be a success, a lot of fun with those kiddos. Uh, we started Tuesday too, this summer, so once a month, a four-month music series, live music, food, friends, just full-time hangouts. Uh, and with our families or adults. Uh, we kicked off a winter walk that kind of got a little too winter-y. Uh, we're hoping for that back next year, uh, if you've got a better weather day. Um, and then first, we continue our morning events, we have movie nights, uh, July fest celebrations, this year we've actually celebrated our own, uh, hundred fifty as well, lots of fun. And then on, on a high note, we had our splash pad, I'm sure you've heard about it, walked in, saw the back of the mountain there that's filling up. Um, we talked about this project since I've been here, um, and the board's starting to get serious about this time last year as well. And they pledged, maybe challenged me to, to raise, uh, those dollars. And through, again, generous community members, I was rattling off a couple of them, Kevin Jones Seven, Peterson Products, Casey's Foundation, Lions, and of course, P W S V. Uh, we are about thirty, forty thousand dollars away from making that great accomplishment. Our plan is break ground, uh, next year in the spring and have that open in time for, if you're some great, when you're, when you're spending dollars, it's going to be all over the world. So I'll hand out that high notes and check to get any questions or I'm working to share that as well.
Yeah, so I, I guess, kind of opening up to everybody here on the board as well, if there's anything that you want to share, anything that we've been doing. Um, stuff that we're proud of, things like that, and, and then kind of opening up to everybody to start having some other discussions and collaboration. So.
So, so, well, did they end up still part of the guys are working on? So is that, and I don't know exactly how this works, but I know in the past we've talked about tech district. I don't know, I've talked about it. So is that? Is that where we're kind of, um, trying to get business to come in at like a low cost or they, they like full price for, for the land or other, what does that all work? You mentioned we've got eight potential businesses coming in, you know?
Kind of thing. What I can say in open session, that is, it's going to help some, you know, hurt us with negotiations in the future, but they're on a, they're banking on different prices.
Okay.
Yeah. Uh, it is within a tech district and we are concerned, that's number one for us. Um, so the bank, but even a whole reset of a ten, right? So that you wait to build up those public utilities, get that funded through the infrastructure that's generated there, and hopefully that can close it up and all add in.
Right, it's always going to get in our business. Let's see, what's that, you know? The tax fees and everything.
Anybody else want to come?
I just wanted to commend, uh, N O S D as a whole, the board for their leadership. Um, I have, uh, three students in the, in the schools. Again, uh, one of my, my, my littlest is one of your newest students and, uh, Ms. Stefani is doing a bang-up job. She was, uh, Harmony was scared to go to school. She was excited but scared. Uh, she came home after the first day and said, uh, I'm not, we had a little cough, it's an allergy, it's not cold, trust me. So anyway, she said, uh, yeah, I'm not scared anymore. I, I, Mr. Funny's really nice, I love her. So, he's done a, done a great job. And, uh, my oldest, he's, uh, well, my oldest one in English school. He's a little bit of a challenge. He doesn't really care for school, but he's actually coming home smiling. So they're, they're doing something right at their, uh, O E S and Ole Miss, and, uh, couple of years we'll get to try out that. So keep up the good work. Uh, thanks for being a big part of the village, just as the village is a big part of the school. And, uh, I really enjoy this, um, this collaboration that, that we do. So I wouldn't even mind somehow finding a way to even step it up, um, if anybody's got any, uh, ideas to, to make that.
Absolutely. I just want to real quickly highlight one of the, uh, businesses that's going to be coming into the business park. I, I think this is appropriate here for me to do that. And there's already been a press release about it, but unless you guys haven't heard, none of you have heard, um, Nine Ladies Dancing, which is, is actually located in Sockville right now. So my daughter happens to, to go there and I'll tell you the backstory real quickly. They were looking for a new space. They're releasing space right by Papa Murphy's and they put out feelers just saying, anybody that has any idea of any place we could go, um, let us know. And I just kind of mentioned it to them. I said, oh, you know, I don't know if this will work or not. I don't even know if the zoning's appropriate or anything like that, I said, but reach out to the village maybe and, and see what could happen. Anyway, fast forward to last week, I believe it was, they secured financing on their parcel. And they're going to be opening, uh, a significant space on the southern end of that business park down there. Um, and that's going to be a real draw to our community. The more I thought about this while I was on vacation, just knowing that right now, they, they draw students from everywhere. I want to say she said it was like Whitefish Bay that came up there and then as far north as Manitowoc and things like that. So they're really, our, our village is going to be a hub for all of those people coming in and out now. So I feel like we're, we are starting to get more of a presence and we're going to be opened up to other communities that are out there to kind of see what we have to offer. So I really think that this is a good opportunity, something I'm very proud of the village, um, for entertaining and for taking a look at, um, to bring, to bring them in here. So they're excited to be here. We're excited to have them. And, and again, it's just going to bring more foot traffic to the, to the village, right? More opportunities for people to drop their dancers off and, hey, we've got, you know, half hour, an hour to kill. Where can we go in the village? What can we do in the village? What are, you know, let's go enjoy a park. Let's go get something at Dollar General or any, anywhere else and some other things that might be coming up here too. So just very excited for them, excited for the jobs that are going to be coming, that'll be brought in from all of the businesses that are, that are looking to either expand or, uh, build in the business park. It's just an exciting time to be here. I know we've talked for a while about how, how can we bring people in? What can we do to better our community? And I feel like within the last two years, especially three years possibly, uh, we've really started to focus on that. And, and I think that our leadership and, and our board in general, we've got a really solid board that's really trying to bring those, those things into the village. Um, and I'm just very excited to see how we can collaborate moving forward and how our board can interact with everybody else and, and really kind of get this machine humming and keep it going. I think that we're doing all, a good job as a whole, and I'm just, again, really excited to, um, be a part of this. Really, it's great. So you know, congratulations and thank you to everybody that are on both boards for really truly being leaders in the community. And, and a lot of times a thank, thankless position, right? I mean, we don't get a lot of thank you. So I'll pat ourselves on the back a little bit here. So.
Good question. One was, sit, eight businesses, how, what's the forecast? How many can we, how much space do we have?
Yeah, eight rich murder. Yeah, so we have a large fifteen acre lot that's left. It's on the northeast corner of on the highway there. That's, we actually got another offer that I cannot share with you that on solid parcel. So assuming that that gets taken, uh, at fifteen acre lot, it really all is left. Oh, correct. Uh, and and just so you're aware, we talked about with our board too, that fifteen acres is really meant to preserve for large main. A lot of the other shops, so we maybe get much smaller on the tool stocks, you know, setting up three acres, things like that, that you're perfectly fine for those for those bad spaces. But a lot of a lot like that, which is reserved for next, back to bigger lower back.
And you saw that you were so did that.
Yeah, so we're looking at large end with cower, it's a pretty great.
You know, I wish I had, oh, it's a natural. Do you see? Yeah.
Yeah, so there's, I guess I'll speak to that a little bit. There's there's quite a bit of activity. Um. The southern portion, which would be Stony Creek, those lots that are in there are very close to being saleable again. If not there now, I know that they're starting to market. Soon to a developer to buy everything up. Spent a lot of rumors, different, you know, why were those houses torn down, all that stuff? They have, oh, they got this, they got that. It was specifically because they wanted to start fresh and the the person that owns that, the environmental company that owns that, wanted to take those houses down. And really just tell it to a developer to see what what would happen. So that's a fresh start. Those are twenty some odd lots that are in there that can be built on. Um. There's another developer that might possibly be building a couple of single family homes in the village. Hillcrest Builders is supposedly breaking ground on condos this fall on the east side, so up on Deer Meadow where it goes towards towards that property. Um, and then there's some talk on on another parcel in the village. I can't really disclose where that is yet, but there's there's some other development potential there. So um, things are opening up. People are becoming more aware. I'm getting more and more questions and phone calls pretty much every day. From people, hey, I'd love to build somewhere. I just need a ready lot. Um, so we're getting there. You know, it's, that's probably the one thing that I I feel like. Out of the goals that I had when I first got on the board, um, that's one of the the sticking points that still hasn't been there. So we know that that's still a challenge, but it's a challenge that we're up for and that we're still working towards.
Uh, said another possibility, because they even opened up some janitors for people. With that, so uh, southernly and one of the uh, southernly, they sold uh to. In your own business, they still own it. They're open to you, whatever. Is that that's used for that property? We'll mention these, right? Maybe it's apartments, maybe it has commercial on the bottom. Um, you know, we're open, we're flexible, whatever that might be. Someone was really working with them when a lot of the buyers come back, we probably talk to that higher.
Excellent. I I would like to make a comment, uh, you know, of the. I'm not the most eloquent speaker, so forgive me. Um, I'll try to get my point across. Uh, I mean, the in the industrial and the residential development, I think, is very important, but I wanted to comment on the EMS. Uh, joint venture we're having with the three other jurisdictions. I think it's very critically important right now. Uh, as well as we're as we're developing as a community. Um. I know that Chris touched on it a little bit, but there's some other points there is I. I, as my reputation goes, I'm not a a a person that uh is excited about raising taxes, but I think the referendum is uh. Very necessary because of the EMS and uh paramedic needs that we have as a community. And the uh three other communities I think are are recognizing that as well. Belgium, the village of Belgium, town of Belgium, and the town of Fredonia. So I think, you know, having said that, uh, the two hundred thousand dollar referendum, I think is a very reasonable thing. But I think that, you know, the other three jurisdictions. Are um having ref, uh, one of them's having a referendum to raise taxes. That's the only one that can do it is the village of Belgium. Because of uh, you know, jurisdictional uh uh restrictions. The other two are going to raise taxes via their town ports. So we're not the only ones contributing towards this pot. So the two hundred thousand dollars is only one part of it and then contributing. Towards that pot. So that's going to help us a lot. And I think. I think we're doing a pretty reasonable job. I think it's like by keeping it at two hundred thousand dollars. I think uh, a lot of people on the board restraining, they want, they they didn't want to make it anymore. But I think it's going to be uh, it it's going to be a touch and goal thing, but I think we can do it. And um, so. Uh, I just wanted to let you know and keep you guys updated on on what was going on with that. There's uh. You know, he touched on a brief part of it, but I think there's a lot more to it. And then the other struggle was just uh getting all the other uh three jurisdictions on board. With us, uh, that's been a little bit of a struggle, but I think they realize the importance of the project. So I think we'll make it here. What do you think, Chris?
That's good. So do I. All right. Any other comments, Donny?
Yeah, I think we keep on talking about uh development tools and uh. Things that drop people into the village or whatever. Uh, we ran into a snag when we profitably were trying to get houses up in a sun vision. And uh, that thing, you know, and it due to whatever reasons it was, it just halted. Uh, we'll be able to see a little bit of development in there this fall, hopefully. Um, but uh. The uh paramedics, as far as a community trying to grow and develop and become attractive. Having paramedics is not an optional thing. It's it's a must have. It's if you don't have that, what are you, a stone inch? Well, I'm sick of being on a stone inch, so. Uh, and many of the people who had listening sessions and many of the people have have the same idea, because we have to have that. That that has to be. And they're thinking about not only themselves, but their grandpa or their aunt or or whatever, or their uh. Relatives that has a certain disease or diabetes or whatever. Yeah, that needs emergency right now service. So um, that's something that got really important to us. So we worked diligently on that. And as far as uh trying to raise money for the school that they. Um, through housing, um, our next best shot was the industrial park. And that's going so well that we should be able to close that sooner than. That was it to twenty years that are that it's set up for. We should, if we could close that. In sixteen or even fifteen years, if we get enough, if we fill it up. And everybody builds and they start working and pay in taxes. That's that's how a tip, the tip works. The people in the buildings in that tip pay the money to the tip and the village. And the school district of M A T C don't get any of that money. It goes paying down the debts and building roads and and whatever. Um, once that's paid off, we can close the tip, the tip. And then that money gets distributed into the general fund and helps to relieve the tax burden on everyone in the community. And allows us to uh add on the service or make a better service or or fix more roads or or whatever. So. Um, that's a long range plan, but that's one of the tools that we have in our quarter to do all of those things. Uh, it might be far off. You know, if you think fifteen years is far off, it's it's not. It comes tomorrow. It'll be fifteen years from now. So. Um, hopefully we'll have something to work collaboratively with on the school district as far as uh some of the things they need. And then run into border uh road uh roadblocks.
Awesome. Um, just in the interest of time, are there any other comments from the board about anything that we're doing here at the village side? I want to make sure we've got enough time to discuss collaboration ideas and what we have here. All right. Uh, if not, then let's move on to discussion of joint and collaborative opportunities. Um. Something that I thought was kind of interesting and and really came up in my mind yesterday, we met, right? And Dave, I I kind of want to, if you could update the board maybe and everybody as to kind of what's going on with the Luxembourg. Um, people and all that stuff too, and maybe talk about that. And we, you know, we kind of discussed the little opportunities that we might be able to. Get engagement from the community um that way too. So maybe talk about what your plans have been, what what's the situation is and all that. Sure. Be great.
Next, you know, uh, Luxembourg. Lot here in the security. Um, uh, some of us in true might ask for Luxembourg roots. Uh, and uh, we were contacted probably about a year ago. Uh, that there was uh anonymous donor who was willing to set aside the funds to really see a partnership grow between. The U S and uh Luxembourg and specifically this area. Um, so uh, working with uh Brighton Schools. Um, here in Wisconsin, us being one of them. And it's really a partnership about first sending staff from sister schools in Luxembourg and here. Uh, was an opportunity to to travel um through a whole abundant model that comes from this donor. Uh, to learn about the culture, to learn about how uh they use school there. Um, and then uh build up that student relationships for their, they understand more about. Um, how school works in Luxembourg and how life is lived there, maybe some of those family roots. Um, so for the course of last year, uh, it was a regular team, some Zoom meetings where they uh, our students collaborate with their students, they get out in session. Um, like it is with high school students nowadays, you have to first get some motivator such as, there's going to dawn set the meeting, right? To get the conversation started, but it was neat where it started at a very service level and actually started diving this um. Somebody issuing in in detail behind it. So that's how it started this this past school year. And then this summer, uh, we had a few staff members that. Um, had their trip funded to be able to go to Luxembourg and actually visit a sister school that's there. Um, they had a great experience. And then uh, last week. Uh, meeting up to introduce a couple of days ago, um, staff from the sister school in Luxembourg came over here and they sat uh in classes. Uh, and then we had a session that you have the good opportunity to just exchange ideas and say. What do you see about our educational model that maybe we're doing really well for some things that you could improve on? Uh, are you, how you do your business in Luxembourg? So it really needs to share that experience. Um, it's, the the program is funded for the next eight years. Um, to be able to build and grow uh those partnerships. And then one of the leaders there from Luxembourg asked me and invited contact. Um, government officials for going out. So I'm not staying, that's Chris. So. My folks guys, I had a call and just said, hey, uh, what do you think uh about coming up to school? Uh, so we got to sit uh as a a group and talk about some of those ideas and just different ways that maybe. Uh, there could even be collaboration amongst uh some of their government officials and boards here. So just a start of a. Of a relationship there. Um, it's it's exciting to see where that might be all.
Yeah.
I think the ambassador for uh Luxembourg is Barrett. Yeah, maybe you want to touch base with him. Yes.
Yeah.
He's the ambassador of Luxembourg.
Yeah, they could have pointed a while.
Well, I mean, if this present regime, I mean, well, he'll probably be there for at least a year, sure. I mean, even if somebody else gets elected, so he'll be there for at least a year.
So, yeah, it was just, it was a cool opportunity to come together and knowing that we had this school board, you know, joint meeting with with our board today. And we're sitting there listening and to some of them and saying, well, what are the opportunities that we could do to maybe get, you know. Students and and, you know, officials from our country here to talk to you guys and collaborate with the community and come up with community projects and things like it was just was. It's like, oh, okay, well, this is perfect timing, right? So um, I think that's just one of the ways that we can. You know, really reach out to each other and see what's what's available. Something that else that comes to mind for me is um, you know, the summer school program, obviously, I don't know. Where you guys end up going, if you stay specifically on campus, but. We were talking about this not too long ago, how needed it would be to to have that splash pad up and running. And if you guys are headed down, you know, to one of the parks for the day or whatever, to make that that part of the program. And, you know, not only that, but learning, you know, through the disc golf course, we've got, we've got awesome opportunities down there in the river and the watershed, you know, using some of those opportunities that we have. Um, so really, there's there's endless opportunity for collaborative learning, I feel. Uh, you know, utilizing the resources we have within the community to to make sure that we're working together and and provide all the opportunities possible. So. Um, yeah, I kind of want to open it up now and just talk, have anybody else that has anything that they want to say about that and see if there's any other opportunities that we're aware of that we can work together. This pen is jumping.
So when we collaborate with Luxembourg, so. So my father spoke fluent Luxembourg. And I think the language is disappearing as the generations, do we expect them to speak English? When we're traveling back and forth or or do we have staff that most complain? You know, so or do or do we need to get a situation where maybe we offer a Luxembourg? Like you Spanish?
Yeah. So so one of the, one of the key reasons why they want want to build the partnership is the heritage of. Uh, all their students are, so when they were at the student hall, um, some some of the kids from Lu- Luxembourg were going into it going. Speak fluently with other students by age when they back us, it hasn't happened much. Right? So so that's a part of it. It's just helping them learn the language. It's more of that that side of it. Um, but I think certainly it would improve the um interest of the child.
Most Europeans are very fluent in English. You'll find, I mean, if you go to Germany, there there are a lot of them know English, so, you know. Yeah. Yeah, I see what you mean. Yeah.
Chris had something.
Is this kind of, is this kind of like in the F S exchange?
Similar. Being the one to lead that organized trip. All on on staff.
It's cool, isn't it?
Yeah.
I mean, it's it's neat to see that our community, you know, obviously there's the Luxembourg roots here, but it's neat to see that specifically a country and schools.
Well, we do. I do. Our D P W director, Eric Pauls, Luxembourg.
Proving that you're the same students that are currently there, so shout out quick. Um, Simon is one of our employees, a recently graduate, uh, Brett Paulus. Uh, who's pre-curbing at the Chinook School. And then uh, Tessa, so it was Tessa, she uh works in our lab. So we have a new wastewater lab and she's the one, she was actually in here today during a break from school, that is helping to operate a wastewater lab. This is somebody who's in high school that is is smart as all that blows our other guys up. I don't like saying that.
That's fun. That's funny, yeah.
Uh, but but she's just a great example. Uh, we need to do uh partnerships like that. I mean, I'm not waiting to maybe save a couple of tax dollars here. But it's building that next generation of public public servants. And that's really exciting to see.
Yeah, for sure.
We should really see if we could put up a an organized work school, um, internship or something like that. For students that are working in the line to be able to get experience at a real job.
I think um, something else that I know we've touched on a little bit, and I know that Ellie Rogers took advantage of it this year. I think it's through National Honor Society. There's always opportunities for volunteers. Uh, you know, especially with all the events that we're doing. Um, you know, we have. Gosh, between the hundred and fiftieth celebration, the mud run, some of the other stuff, maybe you can touch on that a little bit, Tiffany. Um. Just really, we struggle sometimes with those events finding volunteers. And we know that there's programs, at least through an H S and all that stuff too. Um, that are looking for these students to get their opportunity, their volunteer hours. Super easy way to do it. And a lot of it's during the summer, right? So you're, so you don't, not conflicting with a lot of things. Um, but maybe you could touch on that a little.
So I think played uh, Tiffy Barts uh, this summer with the event planning with a hundred and fifty, I was able to uh. Reach out to, well, Mr. Carl's pointed me in the right direction. Uh, and I can't remember her name now. But she gave me all the information to be able to set up, you know, volunteer information. So we finally got to the point of getting the information. We've been struggling, struggling, struggling. And now we're there. And that's kind of, I was going to touch on this a little bit, that. We're trying to bring more events into the village and and keep our citizens here and drawing other citizens to have fun in in Fredonia. Um, our first. Music in the Park series, we had a kid come up to us and he goes, Fredonia is finally fun again.
Yeah.
Thank you. We've we've been trying. Uh, and I think the summer with the hundred and fiftieth, I was really trying to bring collaboration within the village and celebrate. Celebrate everybody in the village of Fredonia, because that's what it was about. It was bringing the school and the different clubs and then the nonprofit and the fire department and everybody we can. I'd like to keep that going year over year, you know, for different events, whether it's the fun before the fourth or movie nights or collaborating different events that we can do for our students. Um, celebrating the parents, you know, this Friday, we've got the movie in the park and it's. Celebrating the kids' first week of school. Yay, they finished, you know, they finally got back and. Um, have something to look forward to on Friday night. So I'd love to be able to keep that collaboration going within the school and reaching out to the different clubs within the school and really. See if we can draw some more interest to making some of these events bigger and better every year, so.
Absolutely. Anyone else wanna comment on anything or any other ideas? You guys have any questions of us? I mean, you got asked a bunch of them already. I feel like an hour is not long enough to do this, right?
Um, what's the, what are we thinking the cadence going forward? I mean, I love this. This is awesome. I'm glad that we're doing this finally. Um, are we thinking once a quarter, you know, kind of get together and touch base or?
I mean, every every time we do this, we say we have to do it more often and then the last time it was like two or three years in between. So I think, you know. Well, yeah. So, um, I would love to see it too. I think it's great. I think it's great for us. It keeps us, all of us knowing what's going on within the community, within the school district, things like that. Um, so I'm I'm open to whatever, you know, we can just. Play it by ear. I don't know what you guys, what your thoughts are. How often would you wanna meet?
Yeah, I mean, I've been, I've been trying to do it at least twice a year to start and just block it a day.
Yeah.
I think that's that's just become so hard. Like you guys said, cadence is one well, first, third, Wednesday, the fourth.
Yeah, Thursday.
Third Monday.
Right.
So, like, you know, that's that's also, if you wanted to say, let's let's find the date. January, if you have a calendar.
Mm hmm.
Say the date on our calendars.
Yeah, I think that's great. I'd love to do that. And I think, you know, the timing here was good. It's right before a bunch of very important things that are going on, elections, referendums, all that stuff. I think it was good to check in. Uh, my initial thought was in spring sometime, but yeah, if we wanna do, you know, January or whatever, you guys let us know. So. Just keep open communication like we always do and, you know, well, maybe we'll just set up a time and we'll figure it out. We can talk amongst ourselves and coordinate something. And then just switch off venues is fine by me. I think that's great. Happy you guys came here. Thank you for doing that. Yeah.
You're welcome. I would suggest maybe one of our admin staff that's present tonight.
Yeah.
I will, I'm gonna do that tomorrow.
Why would you for a round?
All right, I guess that kind of fell under items for future consideration. Um. Yes, please do. Absolutely.
Because I'm really excited about this. If you guys wanna stick around tonight, we do, we are gonna follow right with our village board meeting. Uh, we have a big vote coming up for allowing A T Vs and U T Vs in the village. Um, like our A T V club is in our lobby right now. Uh. I have to say huge kudos to them. They have put together a fantastic presentation and have done a ton of legwork trying to help get this passed within our village. Um. Feel free to talk with them about it. They will give you all the info you want and you could ever imagine. Um, so we are voting on that tonight. So feel free to stick around and listen to the conversation.
You're voting on it next.
Oh, yeah, next meeting. We're just discussing.
Well, I thought we were.
Yeah, well.
Stick around anyway.
That's all right, yeah.
You weren't the only one.
All right, are there any other items for future consideration?
How many times we have to review this?
Yeah. Anyone wanna make a motion to adjourn?
Second.
Oh, no, I can't do it. I mean, I can. Does anybody want to make a motion to adjourn?
Well, I thought he was making the.
Oh.
I'll make the motion to adjourn.
Oh, okay.
Second.
All right. I have a motion in a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Proposed. Motion carries. Thank you so much, you guys for coming. Yeah, absolutely.